Have you always been down there?
What?
Did they reshuffle us? Have you always been down there?
I don't know, I just ended up.
Don't remember you were there the last time. No, no, no.
Morning. It's nine o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And for the audience, if you haven't picked up an agenda and would like one, they're in the shelves in the back, if you'd like an agenda. And roll call, Jerry, if you would note that all planning commissioners are present and Deb Hancock is representing the county board today. Approval of the January 12th, 2015 minutes. They're in our packets. Anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions?
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes be approved as written.
Second.
Motion second. All both in favor approving the minutes as published? Signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda, for the audience, when we approve our agendas with the consent items, and any member of the staff, planning commission, or the audience may pull any of the consent items for discussion. Today's consent items, as on the agenda, are three through seven. We'll start with the planning commission. Is there anyone that wants any of those items pulled for discussion? If not, Brittany, I guess if you're doing the honors of reading items three through seven then, for the record?
Yep. Item number three is conditional use permit CU 0807 for Marilyn Welch. It's to review a single wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit with five conditions. Conditional use permit CU 0845 for Elaine Anderson. Stephanie Anderson is the agent. It's to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a temporary residence while constructing a single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff is recommending to continue the review of the conditional use permit to the May 11th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item five is conditional use permit CU 1102 for Jeff and Cheryl Devaney. To review two internally illuminated on-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff is recommending to continue the review of this CUP to the February 23rd, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Problem?
Just change that to fifteen.
Oh, it should be, sorry. To the February 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item six is conditional use permit review CU 1126 for Mary and Adele Fuss, Keith Lau. To review two accessory structures prior to a principal structure on Lot One and to allow three accessory structures prior to a principal structure on Lot Five. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit with four conditions. Item seven is conditional use permit CU 1401 for PLM Investments LLC, Mary Riss. To review allowing this, a single wide mobile home, excuse me, to review allowing for single wide mobile homes as single-family residents to be located on each of the subject properties in a suburban residential district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit with ten conditions.
Again, for the audience, any audience member can pull any of those items that were just read into the record if you want for further discussion? Is there anyone wishing to pull any of those items for discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with consent items three through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Move on to agenda item number eight.
Item eight is vacation of easement VE 1401. To vacate a portion of the non-access easement located along the interior of Track 38 of Spring Creek Acres. The applicant, Chris Lowe, is requesting a partial vacation of a non-access easement located along the interior of his lot. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to vacate 50 feet of the non-access easement along the east property boundary in order to build an approach and driveway. The proposed approach was off of Herbert Court. And if you look, oh, let's see. Kind of dark, can we dim the lights? There's some topography issues along that lot. You can see the big drainage area. So if he were to access or have an approach built off Herbert Court, he would have to build across that access drainage. So he's asking to vacate 50 feet of the non-access easement along the lot. It's along this side, along the Dewey Lane side. In order to build an approach. And staff did do a site visit out there, that approach is existing right now. He did obtain a building permit and the house is currently under construction. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of the easement to vacate 50 feet of the non-access easement to allow an approach and driveway to be built with four conditions.
Questions for Brittany from the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, what was the easement for?
They had a non-access easement when the property was platted. I'm assuming Dewey Lane is the, and I don't know exactly what the access was for. This is my assumption, is that Dewey Lane is the main thoroughfare through that subdivision. And so they didn't have several approaches off of that subdivision. If you look at the way that it's platted out, there are several lots along there. It was probably to make sure that that didn't have several approaches off that main thorough, or main road. That would be my assumption.
Well, that would be my assumption too, that's pretty common for, to have near an intersection, to have non-access easements. So you don't have a intersection or a driveway right next to the intersection when you have traffic trying to turn, so.
Does that have anything to do with the drainage area? Does it do anything to anybody else's lots or anything by changing that for the drainage?
Well, if they were to fill in that drainage, it could, I would assume, yes. They'd have to put a culvert in, and I think the expense was such that they preferred to take access off of Dewey Lane. They did get approval from the road district, there is a road district out there to construct the approach off of Dewey Lane versus Herbert Court.
Do they have any drainage issues in that area right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Brittany? Do, do any other people have approaches off of Dewey Lane?
There is, if you look at this eastern portion, several of those lots are off of Dewey Lane.
I assume County Highway had no objections since there's no comments from them?
No, that is a road district, so the road district, there was only one condition, is that they submit the new approach permit to the planning director. I do not believe we have that on file at this time for that building permit.
Does that, is that a 66-foot wide easement on Dewey Lane?
You know, I looked that up when I pulled the plat, there is no designation as to the width of it, it's just the length. It doesn't have any specifications, as if it's 33 feet wide or 20 feet wide. I did pull the plat and it didn't indicate the width of it.
And no utilities coming through there for a non-access?
Not that I'm aware. They didn't, Steve had done the, the surveying of it. And out there, they do have a community water system, I believe, and electric, but I don't believe that there is any issue with.
And it won't drain into any of that water system with this change of taking out the non-access easement?
Not that I'm aware. I didn't get any comments as such. Right now, currently, that approach is built. If you look here, it's already taking access off of it. I'm assuming if you look that there's, there's something here. And they've already went through that easement. I know the septic, oops, excuse me, the septic system is located in this area.
But aren't non-access easements for utilities and drainage?
Typically, they're just for separation at intersections to keep traffic, so you don't have a approach right at an intersection or you could have traffic problems or backing up. But that's typically when non-access easements are created.
But say, isn't it on the corners where they put utilities? Okay.
Well, I assume with any county planning, there should be an eight-foot easement on the interior sides of all lot lines.
Yeah, these are platted early enough that there is, I believe, along the interior lot lines. All the new plats or subdivision regulations require eight-foot utility easements on all, all sides.
Thank you for that information.
I think the highway department normally requires a minimum of 300 feet from intersection for, for an entryway. That's, I see that, that's why they've got the 300 feet down there.
Other questions for Brittany? Staff's recommendation is for approval with four conditions. Entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have motion second. Further discussion, any comments from applicants or anyone in the audience? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Item nine.
Item nine is a minor plat and subdivision regulations variance. Is to combine three lots to create Chief of the Hills Common Day Tract and to waive plating requirements. Staff is recommending that this item be continued to the February 9th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Staff did do a site visit to the area and could not access it at this time. According to the surveyor, that is a seasonal, seasonally maintained road. If you go back and look, there's where Divide Road comes off of South Rochford Road. But if you look at this area right here, it's not maintained. So it's pretty difficult to access these lots during the wintertime. According to the applicant, he doesn't have any intent of accessing it during the wintertime. It's not going to be a permanent residence, or it's not, he doesn't have an intent to use it as a residence at this time. But there are, there were some issues that were raised by the Forest Service regarding this small portion right here. There is an easement along this tract to access these lots. And that was filed quite some time ago between the property owners. But the Forest Service did have some issue about them utilizing a road through this area. I did get a fax this morning from the surveyor from some information that the Forest Service sent in 1991. So I need to research that more, so I'm asking to continue this item so we can make sure that there's access.
Assuming from your statement, the applicant's not in necessarily a hurry to, for approval, I mean, they're good with the recommendation for continuing it?
When I had spoke to the, I actually talked to the surveyor, he said he understood the situation just because of the, most of the access is off the Forest Service roads and that he needed to speak with the applicant to find out what he wanted to do.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Other questions for Brittany? Staff's recommendation is to continue to the February 9th meeting. Entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, any comments from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Item 10.
Item 10 is layout plat 1436 to create Track Dean and Track Drew of HES 303. Staff is recommending approval of the layout plat with nine conditions. Currently, let's see. The lot is Zone General Agricultural District, consists of 141.25 acres. There are two distinct building site locations with separate addresses currently on this lot. There is, and the surveyor had showed, this is the existing farmstead, farmhouse. And then there is a manufactured home on what is going to be proposed Track Drew. This is going to be the unplatted portion of HES 303. There is, oops, excuse me, there is one of the residences. And, let me go. And there was once a single wide mobile home located in this area and that has since been removed. The proposed lots are Track Drew, which will be located in this section here. And it'll only consist of, or it'll consist of, oops, sorry, Track Drew is here, excuse me. And that will consist of 42.547 acres. It will have the manufactured home, garage, and onsite wastewater treatment system. And the access will come off of a 33-foot wide access easement off of Old Hill City Road. They are proposing to put a 66-foot wide easement here and a 33-foot wide easement here. Currently, there is a 33-foot wide easement here that accesses the property. And that consists of a eight, I would say, eight to 10-foot wide gravel road. It's in good condition, maintained. When we were out there, you can see it here. That is the proposed Track Drew, that's the manufactured home. Proposed Track Dean will be located in the, this section and it'll only be 15.52 acres. It does not have any structures at this time. And then access will be off of the proposed, let's see, 33-foot wide easement. They're proposing an easement here, a 33-foot wide easement here, and then a 66-foot wide easement here off of Old Hill City Road. These are existing 33-foot wide easements that will also access the property. Old Hill City Road is an improved 24-foot wide asphalt, asphalt concrete road. The existing 33-foot wide private access easements are eight to 10-foot wide gravel roads. The 33-foot wide easement and the 66-foot wide easement are currently unimproved. When you go out there, it looks like it will take access along here and to the east. So staff is recommending approval with nine conditions.
Questions for Brittany?
Do, I see that in condition nine, you referred to a court ordered dissolution. Do you have a copy of that and the, and whatever is mandated in that court order?
The plat is to comply, I do not. That was on the application, that it was a court ordered dissolution of the property. I'm not sure if the applicants are here at this time.
Are they?
I do not believe so.
Because the, wouldn't the county have to comply with anything in the court order?
Where is this?
What you're talking about?
You said it's one of the stipulations?
Number nine.
Where?
Actually, the next page.
Yeah, it's on the next page.
Oh, that's just a note.
No, that was just a note that was submitted with the application.
Yeah, that's not part of the condition.
No, the purpose of the plat was to comply with the dissolution of the limited partnership.
Barb, does that answer your question?
I'm still confused, but that's okay.
Well, I think that was for information only, not necessarily part of nine, correct?
Yes, and when we, you know, we present these applications, we try to figure out what their intent is or the reasoning for their wanting to subdivide, and that was their reasoning. It was a court ordered dissolution of their partnership. What the conditions of that partnership, I do not know. I think I can address that in the preliminary plat process if this gets approved.
Other questions for Brittany? Staff's recommendation is for approval of the layout plat PL 14 dash 36 with nine conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion or comments from the audience? Planning commission? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Take us to item 11.
Item 11 is rezone 14, 1, 1412 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 1409 for Gordon and Carmen Abernathy. Is to rezone 3.5 acres from low-density residential district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map from low-density residential district to suburban residential district. The property is located out Nemo Road. They had submitted a layout plat in December of 2014 to create a one-acre lot and a two-and-a-half acre lot. In order to do that, they would have to either get a lot size variance or rezone the property. And that was a condition of their layout plat. And I know PJ had worked on this one and worked with the thing, or with the applicants on this. I did the layout plat originally. The majority of the properties around them are zone low-density residential. There's some limited agriculture district. There is some suburban residential here on Palmer Road. These are low-density residential lots that are about one acre in size. So I know staff had, kind of went back and forth on what was the appropriate path, or method, I believe, to take. So PJ had indicated in his staff report that they could not support the applicant's request to rezone the subject property to LDR due to the possibility of future subdivision of the subject property. In addition, the applicant's request to subdivide into two lots will increase density. But if rezone to suburban residential, the applicant could continue to subdivide the lot. Additionally, by ordinance, staff cannot support the applicant requesting a lot size variance to subdivide the subject property and maintain LDR zoning. However, staff does believe that this is better of the two options, is in most harmony with the applicant's request and the current and future zoning of the property. So if the Board of Commissioners chooses to allow a lot size variance despite the applicant's not meeting the criteria, the five criteria for a variance, staff suggests the applicant be allowed to apply for the lot size variance and the fees associated with the rezone be applied to the lot size variance application with the exception of advertisement costs. The notice of hearing letters and mailing list would also be the applicant's responsibility. So staff is recommending denial of rezone 1412 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 149.
Maybe you stated that, but there, on the map, it shows, there are a lot of, quite a few lots nearby that are one-acre lots that wouldn't meet LDR anyway. Are those part of a PUD or, or did they get a lot size variance for that? I did go on rapid mapping, I mean, they're all one-acre lots, so they wouldn't meet the three-acre minimum either.
No, they don't. And I believe that those were, let me see what he had, platted prior to our zoning ordinance. These ones here, along Trooper King.
Yep.
Are those the ones? Yes. And the future land use, I do have the future, here's the future land use map. So this area is PUD sensitive over here, yes. And, and the current future land use of that lot is low-density residential. So in speaking with PJ, he had thought keeping that low-density residential district and going for the lot size variance with the okay of the Board of Commissioners. At this time, they would have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment to get that lot size variance. So there really is a couple of different options. So I think I would like some suggestions from the planning commission.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
There's a subdivision to the south, the southeast also, that you don't show the designation of, where there's quite a few smaller lots. It's down there off of North Emerald Ridge, in Emerald Ridge.
Yeah, that is a PUD.
That's a PUD?
Canyon Springs, yes.
Okay.
So the biggest subdivisions is this Palmer Road subdivision, has suburban residential. Canyon Springs is a PUD, and then South Canyon Country Estates is suburban residential, and that's a little farther down.
I don't know this, but low-density residential and the difference between suburban residential?
Low-density residential allows three-acre lot size, or requires a minimum three-acre lot size. Suburban residential district requires a minimum of 20,000 square feet. You do have to have one acre minimum for well and septic. But they intend to have a shared well on this lot, so.
So they could subdivide down to 20,000 square foot, if it's SRD?
Yes, they could. I do believe, I've been out on that site. Because of the location of their onsite wastewater system for the existing structure is here. If they were to further subdivide here to suburban residential, I think it would be difficult to meet setbacks, to get something in the way that this lot is shaped. That's not saying that, that isn't impossible, but.
So you're saying, so are you saying that really you can only ever put two?
I wouldn't know that unless you actually tried to put something on there. But I think with the, anytime you have a, I think it would be difficult, and then the location of the septic to try to get another well, septic and.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because I mean, you have at least a 100-foot separation from the well to the septic field. So I mean, you start limiting the land and how much you could subdivide it and put septics on there fairly quick, yeah.
And you have a, like a pointed, you know, where you have two, this would require a 25-foot setback and this would require a 25-foot setback from the lot line so that the buildable area here is minimal.
Right, not available.
You'd have to have a pretty narrow structure and to get a septic system in, in that area too.
No room for a drain field?
Like, I, it'd be difficult, it'd be a challenge, I said, would be the correct word.
Other questions from the planning commission for Brittany?
It's more a comment, looking at this analysis of current zoning, the zoning seems to mean nothing.
Oh, that was a question I had too, on the map. Several places it says that Lawrence County is just north of the county line and then Meade. It's Meade County, isn't it? It butts up against Meade, doesn't it? Or is it Lawrence?
Lawrence.
Oh, okay. Because a couple of them say Meade and a couple say Lawrence, so. I guess most of them say Lawrence, there's just one that says Meade. So it is Lawrence County.
Yes.
And does Lawrence County have zoning requirements for this area?
For this area, no, they don't have jurisdiction in this area.
No, but I mean, you know, just across the county line, it's really close to Lawrence County.
They do have zoning regulations and I'm not familiar with them.
Other questions for staff? Is Appkin here and wishing to speak?
I believe the applicant and their representative is here.
Good morning, my name's Janelle Fink, I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I am here with Mr. and Mrs. Abernathy, Gordon and Carmen Abernathy. They came to you a few months ago and applied for a layout to allow them to subdivide or split their property in two, to allow an additional residence for one of their children. And that layout was approved with some conditions, one of which was that they needed to come back to you and either secure a rezoning to the property or a lot sized variance. In speaking with staff, the Abernathys, I think, came away with the understanding at that time that the rezoning might be the easiest or the most supportable action. And in discussing with them, you know, we, we looked at it both ways and decided that really the most transparent way would be to go ahead and propose the change in zoning rather than ask for the variance. So we went through that process and didn't hear from PJ. We didn't actually get our staff report back until I think it was Thursday of last week, so we really didn't know where we stood. One of the things that, you know, I, I think that I'd like to maybe point out for this area is that, and I think Commissioner Landers also kind of hinted to this, is this is a mixed message in terms of zoning in this area. The map that I put together for you here shows the different zoning districts. What shows up as almost white is general egg zoning. The green is limited egg, which means it should have a minimum of 10 acres. The general egg should have a minimum of 40 acres. The yellow should have a minimum of three acres. And then the goldish over in the palmer red area is suburban residential, and that can go down, like Brittany said, to the 20,000 square feet. Each one of the Xs that you see there is a lot that does not comply with the minimum zoning requirements in terms of acreage. So there are very nearly as many lots that do not comply as do comply. And that sends a real mixed message, not only to, to the people that live out there, but us as our agents as well, what do you really mean, what do you really want out there? The history of the subdivision, she talked about the Calvary Trails, which is kind of the dense multiple Xs right in the middle. That was in 1972. That was a 1972 subdivision that came in and had been modified over time. The Palmer subdivision, which is the suburban residential, which is in close proximity, it's only about a half a mile away, and there are multiple lots there that are zone suburban residential. And that was a 19, let's see, 1972 through 1999. So that's fairly contemporary. One of the last splits there was 1999 and they allowed lots to go down to about one and a half acres on, on each lot. So when you look at this, in my mind, it says, we don't really know what we want for sure or what the intent was. And when I looked at this with the Abernathys, I really felt that the truly most transparent way to do this is to change to the suburban residential zoning designation and avoid the confusion and mixed message of, okay, well, in this instance, we, we'll do LDR, but we're going to go a less lot size. I think that sends the wrong information to the people of the county. I think that's difficult for them to, to interpret and understand what's truly meant. The Abernathys are not interested in further subdividing their property. They would be happy to place a deed restriction accordingly so that they're not interested in going down to a 20,000 square foot lot. They're just trying to find the most compliant way to use their property in the same way that their neighbors in Calvary Trails are using it, the same way that their neighbors in the Palmer subdivision are using it. One of the options that I posed to PJ when I got the staff report, and he's not here, so he wasn't able to respond, is, well, can we do a PUD for this particular one? Can you look at this and in this certain circumstance, there's PUD sensitive all around when you looked at the comprehensive plan amendment? Why can't we do, you know, maybe that would be a better option so that that would allow you the confidence that this would only be limited to two lots and couldn't go forward from that? You know, I, I truly believe that, that the SRD is appropriate in this area based on the existing uses and what's been allowed and permitted and approved there. It's, it's really unfair to, to, you know, allow a certain amount of people to, to use and enjoy their land in, in one fashion and then deny that to another. So I guess I would request that you would approve the change in zoning. They'd be willing to create a deed restriction, that you couldn't subdivide it any further along with that or alternate to that if you feel uncomfortable with that, that maybe we could approach this as a PUD and, um, and achieve those goals through, through that avenue. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I.
But a lot of these, this ambivalence in the zoning, is that not a function of the fact that many of these properties were planted long before?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That thing drives me nuts generally, so, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, let me restate that. The ambivalence in the, in the zoning seems to me to be partly a function of, as was mentioned earlier, the fact that many of these properties were platted before we had any kind of zoning ordinances. And I, you know, in all fairness, um, we, we don't want to assume that because nothing was done 40 years ago that we need to comply with, you know, that lack of attention that seemed to be expressed then. So I, I, I think a lot of these, we, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this is a, a, a bad idea to do this for these folks. But, but I think we have to look kind of carefully at the zoning and realize why there are these exceptions and before we assume that, you know, nobody's complying or little compliance is made and so forth. So I, I would hesitate to simply, you know, endorse this simply because there are others who are enjoying this exception, but for much different reasons, I guess, is my point. I guess, uh, question I have, Janelle, for you is, I mean, uh, you, you mentioned the PUD and, and I guess that's a thought I had, because as you know, with the rezoning, we can't put, even though you've offered to put the, the deed restriction on that, we can't require that with the rezoning. It's either rezoned or not. So is, you know, are, what's, did you get a chance to visit with PJ as far as the process if it's a PUD and the application fees, I mean, are, would they be waived?
I did not get a chance to visit with PJ. Um, I had sent him an email on Friday and I don't know if he's ill or just away, but he didn't get a chance to respond. Um, one of the things that he'd mentioned in his staff report was that if they wanted to pursue the lot size variance, that maybe the fees that had been paid could be applied towards that and we'd just pay the publication fees. You know, I think the same might be said or asked, if we do the PUD zoning, maybe we just readvertise and, you know, pay, pay for the mailing costs and, and waive, you know, the, the part of the application fee. I would also maybe respond to Commissioner Coleman. There are certainly some lots that were platted prior to the current level of zoning, but at the time that they adopted the zoning map, somebody came through and looked at this and said and knew what these lot sizes were and assigned them a zoning that did not correspond with the size of the lot. And I still continue, you know, contend that that is, is not transparent to have existing lots and then to assign them a particular zoning at whenever the, the layer came through that was different than the way the property's being used. So there, I, I, there's not a clear wonderful answer for this, but I hope that we can find a way through, um, through for these circumstances.
I, I guess my comment would be as to whether a lot, whether or not it's appropriate to do a planned unit development for a single lot like this. Because isn't the intent of a planned unit development like a huge subdivision tract or something or not? Do we have cer- do we have situations where there's isolated lots like this that are planned unit development?
I don't know that in the county you specifically have very many single unit ones. I know that Commissioner Hadcock can attest that, and Rapid City handles their zoning different. They have multiple, multiple individual lots that contain planned developments. So it's not that you cannot do that.
Okay.
You know, I think that it can be applied in that way if you choose.
Well, I believe we have done that on a few cases.
It seems like, I just, it seems like there's a few that came up, but I just wondered, okay.
Yeah, just because there are exceptions.
Yeah. PUDs, yeah. The only concern I had is listen to the, uh, I want to say commissioners, planning commission, is the septic and, and you're going to split the lots and maybe some of those lots were allowed because of the drainage, because of, I mean, not just because we switched it to low density. There had to be reasons to look into the drainage, the septic, the utilities, the setbacks. So when you accept something, um, maybe that's why some were accepted that way and some not. And I, I don't have a problem with switching this, I just want to make sure all those issues are taken care of before we split it. I think someone had brought up about the drainage, meaning the, I'm not the drainage, but the septic, the wastewater. Did, did you have that, the layout plat shows that when these two lots are split, that, that you have enough room, enough setback?
Yes.
To do those things?
Yeah. They, they've actually met all of the stipulations of their layout approval. We've done the plat for them, shown the acreage. They did their percolation tests and soil profile. I think the recommendation was that they do an at grade or a mound system, which is an acceptable system to utilize, and so they're prepared to do that. So they've, they've done everything that they need to do, you know, to get to this next phase. This is, this is kind of our little stumbling step here, so.
I guess my comment earlier, kind of in regard to that, was not so much that the two lots, I don't think are an issue. If they further split it if it's SDR, then you start getting into separation and setback limitations. With the two lots as proposed, I don't think there's an issue with the setbacks, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Sid.
Thank you.
But, but with a PUD, we could, well, with a PUD, we could stipulate, uh, the conditions that we're searching for here, which is to confine it to two lots, period. Is that right? Yeah. Correct.
And do you know, is, is there a preference, I mean, with the PUD versus her, you know, suggesting a deed restriction, do, do you have one preference over another?
To, to me, I, I'd be fine with the deed restriction, but we can't require it on a rezon.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing.
So I mean.
I think the PUD gives the county more.
Right.
Control.
Yeah, of what they, what's expected.
Yeah, with the deed restriction, you'd have to proceed based on our personal guarantee, which I feel is pretty good.
Which we believe you, but.
I feel is pretty good, but I understand, you know, you may have instances where you don't feel that, that level of comfort, so.
And if the Abernathys chose to sell this lot eventually, we would have no recourse if.
If, if it becomes a deed restriction, it should pass with.
They kind of tend to get lost, don't they? Sometimes in the paperwork, the deed restrictions, sometimes.
You know, they shouldn't, they should be first and foremost in a title commitment. They should be the first thing that you're seeing, first thing that's disclosed.
They aren't always.
Some things slip through the cracks, but, yeah.
So what was the, um, application with the PUD about what they have to do or what they have to pay?
I don't, I, I think you were saying it never got pursued, right? For the PUD portion of it, you, you, you talked to PJ about it, but PJ, you, you guys just kind of started addressing that issue, right?
Yeah, I, I sent out my comments to him and I didn't hear anything back from him, but I would like to see that as our, our, our next alternative if you don't feel comfortable with the SRD zoning, to be able to move to the planned unit development that would allow you that restriction and potentially waive the application fee and allow us to just redo the mailings.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Care.
Karen.
Could you? Uh, or maybe we could ask Brittany to tell us what the fees are for filing for a PUD? I don't have my copy of the zoning ordinance with me today.
It's 370, the same as the, um, what a rezon is.
As a rezon, so it's the same fees?
So, yeah, so they would just require to just, um, pay for the advertising cost and the, the, like, as noted in the staff report, the, what we prepare for their notice of hearing and mailing letters.
Well, then obviously there'd be a time delay too versus if we chose to go forward with that request as the applicant had requested.
Yeah, because they have to be readvertised.
Mr. Chairman, what's an appropriate thing to do here then to make a motion for a continuous?
Well, to me, the options are motion continue to investigate possibly a PUD or, uh, proceed with the applicant's request or you could, you know, deny it per staff's recommendation. The applicant's request originally was to rezon it to SRD and we have that option of, you know, recommending rezoning to SRD.
When you've had lots in these other areas, have you had PUDs on any of the other ones that had to switch from low density to suburban? Or was it allowed?
Um, not that I'm aware of. The only, um, single lot that they tried to rezon to PUD, I believe, was in Sun Country Estates and that got denied.
So no other PUDs in that area?
There is a PUD, Canyon Springs Preserve is a PUD. It's just, you know, south.
Big subdivision.
Here.
But that whole, that whole community is PUD.
Yes, yes.
Not just one lot.
Yes.
I don't believe there's anything in the zoning ordinance that says that you cannot do it on a single lot. You can correct me if you see that, but I, when I looked at it, I saw nothing that said that it was prohibited for use on a single lot. And I think if we were to, you know, continue to allow us to come forward, I think we would like to be able to have some kind of assurance that maybe this is what you feel is appropriate before we chase off in another direction again, so.
Other questions for Janelle? Are there anyone else from the audience wishing to speak to this?
Yeah, I'd like to know, I'll come.
Hey, if you could, please come to the mic and state your name for the record and so everyone can hear you too, so.
How can, how can you take some of these lots?
Please, please state your name, name for the record.
Emerald Gibbon, I live across the road.
Thank you.
I'd like to know how you can take some of these lots that were 45 acres or whatever, they five acres, 10 acres, and all of a sudden cut them to acre and a half? That's about three and a half acre, you're going to cut it in half? Doesn't make any sense. Look at the sewers you're going to have up there. If you cut every acre up there, 40, 50 acres and put them in acre and a half and put sewers on every one of them, just think about that. I don't think it's right. You know, if they want to be in town and live close to a neighbor, that's where they should stay. Up in the hills, we like our view, we like our privacy, and all of a sudden here's all these houses are coming up. What do you got? A bunch of barking dogs and it's not good. It used to be, the Black Hills used to be a beautiful place. Now it's getting to be a suburb and I don't think it's right. You guys come up there and start saying, well, you can lot this off, you can lot that off. That's a bunch of crap.
Where do you live, sir?
Huh?
Where do you live up there?
I live right across the road from them guys.
In the green?
Live over there in, in the yellow.
Down below?
Just up the road a little bit, about a half mile.
So you live like north? Thank you, sir.
See, I used to lease all of that land. And then when the old, the old man had died, boom, they, they started selling lots off that thing.
Well, and, uh, I appreciate your comments. You know, one of the concerns we have is so it can't be further subdivided other than the layout plat that's already been approved for this dividing into two lots.
Well, I don't.
It's, it's a matter of rezoning right now. The, the layout plat has been.
Well, rezoned, what do you do? The covenants was three acres, no less than three acres. And that was put in there probably 30, close to 40 years ago. How come you're changing the covenants all the time?
Well, the county can enforce covenants. The covenants aren't part of the ordinance. It's homeowners associations are the ones that can enforce covenants.
Uh, you guys aren't making any sense. You know, next thing, if they want to live, live that close, say, move back to town. You know, you can't even throw a rock without hitting somebody anymore. I don't think it's right.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Jim.
Uh, you know, the gentleman raises a good question though, and which is the whole notion of why is this zoned the way it is and what were the expectations? And for the neighbors, their expectation was that they were going to be able to live in an environment with substantial acreage around, around them and this compromises that. So I, I appreciate what the gentleman is saying, that indeed, um, it's a disappointment for him. His expectations are much different than what is seeming to take place here. But, you know, there's been a lot of development in that whole area. It's getting to look a lot less like a rural environment and no matter what the zoning, I think it will continue to do that. So, um, I'm kind of inclined to think that this one situation where there would be a distinct restriction on any other subdivision, uh, might be acceptable. But I, I appreciate what the gentleman was saying. I, I know, I live out on Nemo Road a little bit farther and, uh, we're much closer together out there, but I, I can appreciate his, um, pining for the better days.
Mr. Chairman?
Barb.
I, I think we're looking at a very basic question. What's the meaning of zoning? And if it has no meaning, then we might as well just throw out the whole book. I, I, I think that the public has reasonable expectations that if their area is zoned in a certain way, that it will stay that way unless there is a hearing and the zoning changed not just for one person, but for the community.
But it's hard to put restrictions on people that own the land and then come back because we're the county and say, I understand if that area couldn't handle all the septics, if they're, remember what I was saying earlier, if they couldn't handle the septics, if there was going to be an issue with water systems out there, if there was going to be issues with, you know, how you're laying out those plats, I said, I think then you need to be concerned, but when people own the land and that can handle that, it's hard to say, sir, you can't, or ma'am, you can't do that.
Then, then why have zoning?
I'm going to have to agree. We did it in the city too and it drove me nuts. They'd have commercial, they'd have low density and they'd change it for the landowner. I have no idea. I'm going to have to agree with you, Barb, but I also believe in, in rights of the people if that, that land can handle it.
Yeah, I do too.
So it's, it's a hard, it's a hard distinction to either go with what the county said it was going to be or go with the landowner that if it's not going to hurt that land, if it's not, if it can handle that septic. And unfortunately, um, we love to tell people that they can't do it, you're saying, sir, because, you know, we want those three point five acres and stuff, but they also own the land. And if it can handle those stipulations, it's hard to say no.
Well, I think in terms of zoning, we're talking about philosophy too.
Yes, ma'am.
Where the purpose of zoning, if I understand it correctly, is not just to protect one landowner, but to protect all his neighbors as well. And so how is, how is changing for one, for the philosophy that you have and I share, that people should have a right to do what they want with their land? How does that protect the neighbors who have their? protect the neighbors who have their expectations as well?
I, I think part of what's weighing in here, too, though, is if you look at the map, there are a lot of one-acre lots that are smaller than the subdivision that we're talking about. You know, I think that's what makes this decision difficult.
And small lots very close to this location.
Yeah.
It's not like, you know, where sometimes we get cases where they're pointing two miles down the road. I mean, these are nearly adjacent. You know, it's almost like a continuation of this smaller lot size section along the main road.
The bottom line is, if you put green on that side, what's, what's going to happen? Green's going to keep coming in. So you also have to decide if you think green should keep going up, or it should stop and just stay yellow, low density. So you guys are going to start that green in that area, and it will probably, the next person says, well, they let them do it with the PUD, I can do it, too. So you're going to start some spot zoning on green on that side.
What do you mean by green?
Green is, they're doing suburban.
Green is limited ag.
Oh, I'm sorry. Suburban residential.
You're talking about, you're talking about the orange part. Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
We don't have a motion on table right now. To me, the options are, we can, staff's recommendations is for denial, a rezon 14-12 and comprehensive amendment to 14-09. And staff was basically supporting them remaining LRD and then coming in with a lot size variance. The other option is that we could approve for the applicant's request, rezon to SRD. And the third option to me would be continue to give the applicant a chance to visit with the staff as on a planned unit development.
I move we continue this.
Second.
The motion second for continuance. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, it seems to me that since we've already worked with this applicant on the layout plat, that it, it seems disingenuous for us to pull the rug out from under them, having, you know, having, they've already gone through this process. It seems to me that the, the best solution might be to go, ask them to go look at a PUD, because that way we don't spot zone with suburban residential on the northwest, northeast side of the road, and, you know, and then set the expectations for other people, that they can also subdivide their low den, low-density residential into suburban residential. So I would, I would urge that we support this motion.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Motion is for continue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried for continue.
I guess I have to, do we have to say continue to what meeting? Next meeting?
I was just going to ask.
Don't we have to pick a date?
Do you want to be actually?
Thank you, Lori.
The end of February, February 23rd, or what?
I guess I would ask Brittany how long this might take.
Brittany, do you, can you offer timeline?
Offer a sense of how long we should continue this for?
That's what I was discussing with Janelle. And Jerry, we have had some instances where this has been kind of an issue, where we've actually done a PUD overlay over an existing zoning, so you wouldn't lose that low-density residential district zoning, but you would have that PUD overlay over it, so some of the restrictions would be on it, but you'd keep that, the underlying zoning. So that's something that, as staff, and I'll talk to PJ, may be an option.
Do you think that's something you guys could do in a couple weeks or a month? I guess that's our question.
This was publication, I assume it's, you're talking about.
It would have to go to the end of the February.
To the end of the month?
February. Ms. Appkin, Janelle, can you speak for the applicant as far as, are you okay with that timeframe?
Am I understanding correctly that we're being directed to go through with a PUD or PUD overlay, depending on what staff says?
Yeah.
And then come back to you?
Yes, I think that's.
Okay, in the most expedient way we can get to that point, yes.
Well, and I guess I'd, I'd have to interject that, you know, PJ's recommendation is to pursue the low, the low LDR with, with a lot size variance. So I guess you're going to have to get his buy-in with that, right?
However, he says he can't support that. If you read further in his recommendation, he says he can't support it, so.
But he als, but he also says in here that that's most in harmony with what's going on in the, in the area. So, I mean, that's the way I understand the report.
But my understanding, too, is from a technical standpoint, he can't.
Support it.
He can't support it, but that doesn't mean the Planning Commission County Board can't grant it. The County Board would, you know, be the one acting on that.
I mean, in his report, he says that, you know, he can't support it, but he said if we want to go ahead and, and do something with this property, that's the, that was the recommendation he had. That's most in harmony with the surrounding properties.
And I guess the continuance.
I understand that, but from my point of view, if he doesn't support it, and I have to prove a hardship to you for a variance, I'm having a hard time. I'm, I'm not sure what my hardship is in the variance, and so I want to come forward with the most supportable proposal to you that I can.
My understanding from the discussion is I think the PUD is what the Planning Commission is gearing towards, but with the continuance, it gives you an option to talk to staff on either option.
Do we give direction? Wasn't there a money thing or switching of?
A waiver fees or a?
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
I would like to make another motion, but I think we're still discussing.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still on this.
Okay, I just didn't know if you guys, okay, thank you.
I think we're comfortable with the timeframe. I think we would like to see if we could, the fees that we've applied, be, be moved over if you do the PUD or PUD overlay.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Second. All right, we haven't finished with the first, we're still on the motion as far as the continuance.
Meeting day.
And trying to set a date first.
You voted on it, but we didn't put a.
We're just trying to get a.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, we approved it, we were just trying to pick a date.
Yeah.
And I think we decided the second meeting in February.
The 23rd, February 23rd.
There we go.
I'm sorry, let's go back to the motion being made on the floor.
That the fees that have been assessed for the rezon be applied, or be, that the, when we deny the rezon, that we do it without prejudice, and that those fees be applied to whatever action comes next.
This is a clarification, we can recommend that to the County Board, but only the County Board can waive fees.
Right.
Second, are you going for a second, or?
Second.
Shame it's second.
Motion second for recommendation on the fees. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
That takes us to discussion of vacation home rental ordinance. Brittany, are you presenting on that, or? Oh, okay.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Haney is Commissioner's Office Manager. At our two meetings ago, the Board of Commissioners voted to reactivate the Vacation Home Rental Committee, and I was directed to contact all the members and see if they were interested in continuing serving. I did have three individuals that weren't on a, or weren't able at this time to continue on the committee. The board did vote to appoint Charlie Johnson as a member of the committee, as well as Mr. Jim Peterson of Hill City onto the committee. So at this time, we are out for advertisement for an additional member to replace that third one. I have had two more people already contact me and submit interest statements, so word of mouth is going well. But what I'm here in front of you for today is we need a liaison from the Planning Commission to sit on that committee. So we would like to ask one of you to volunteer and act as that liaison and technical advisor for the vacation home review.
Would anyone?
I'd like to do it.
Okay. If anyone else, I guess Barb is willing to step in and do that, so.
Okay.
We don't want to fight over a plum like that.
Okay, we will add her to the roster, and it will be back in front of the Board of Commissioners to vote on the additional member if they so choose.
Thank you, Barb. Holly, could you tell us who the other members of the committee are? Just refresh our memory. Do you have the list?
I do, I have it in front of me. Mr. Jeff Shagru, Ms. Rita Chapman, Ms. Joyce Shagru, and Ms. Corey Tomovic. And then Charlie Johnson and Jim Peterson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on that? I had no action, taking that as an information item and get our representative. Thank you, Holly. Discussion of December Planning Commission meeting, we started that last meeting, I don't know that we didn't really come to any consensus or any motion passed on that. Brittany, I guess if you want to present?
Actually, I was going to ask to continue that till the next Planning Commission meeting, when PJ can be here, if that's.
Yeah, I know PJ was going to come up with options or dates and, for further discussion, so. Why don't we do a motion to continue that since?
Do we need one? I'll move that, please.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion for continuing that?
Oh, this is on the December stuff?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Figure out if you want one or two meetings, is that the deal?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't here at last year's meeting.
There were some things that were continued.
Okay.
There were two items that ended up having to go to County Board directly without coming through the Planning Commission, because we didn't have a second meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so I think there's, the board would like to see us have a second meeting in December.
In December, okay.
County Board report, Brittany.
County Board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the December 8, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of minor plat PL 1434 and subdivision regulation variance SV 1417 for David and Lisa Lindy, the Board of Commissioners waived all subdivision regulation requests and approved the minor plat with three conditions, removing condition number four.
Can you refresh us?
Is that the issue?
I know, I was trying to remember.
That was the one that we didn't get a second on.
With the turnaround.
Is that the one we were confused about? It seemed almost, yeah.
I thought that was a January meeting.
It is. There's, there's a typo in here.
Not the December 8th. So it was January 8th?
Yeah.
Oh, that's January.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, Brittany?
No.
Items from the public.
From the public, oh, it's in public.
No public. One lady in the public out there, George don't count.
Items from staff, I guess.
Yes, we have a new employee announcement, so maybe at the next meeting when PJ's gone. This is Cassie Ballstad, she's the new Assistant Planning Director. So just welcome her.
Again, Cassie.
I figured I wasn't going to put her up here quite yet. So we welcome her to our staff.
You want to maybe just state a little bit of your background?
Sure.